Free to put them in the chat, which is located down at the bottom of your screen. You can click on it and just put it in there. If it's a question for the presenters, that's fine. If it's a questions for Ms. Blair or myself, that's fine too. And when they're done with the presentation, if it's not relevant to what they're doing, Mrs. Blair and I will do our very best to give you some answers, or we'll find those answers and get that information back to you. So without further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce to you two of our very talented counseling staff people at Case Middle School. We have Carla Van Warmer, who is one of our guidance counselors, who has been at Case, I won't tell how many years, but she's been there a little while. But she doesn't look it, she looks wonderful. And we also have a new addition to Case Middle School, Ms. Nova Shank, who is a pivot counselor. And these are just two of many counselors and support staff that we have at Case Middle School. And they're going to talk to you about mindfulness and stuff that they've been doing at Case. But just know that they are two of several staff that we have here. If you have any needs for your kids, if you have needs to talk to somebody, you know, we've got a lot of support. So please, 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 please reach out to us. Because it could be, you know, social emotional needs, it could be academic needs. We've got lots of people that want to help you. But you just need to reach out, or you need to have, you know, your sons or daughters, or you know, whoever's living with you, reach out to us so we can really support them in every way during this different school year that we're having. So that's enough for Mr. Taylor. Now, Ms. Van Warmer, Ms. Shank, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Let me get my screen shared here so we can share a presentation with everybody. There we go. First of all, I want to thank you all for taking your precious time to join us tonight. You know, life gets busy with children and families, especially in the evening. So we're delighted to share a little bit of what Carla and I have been working, Mrs. Van Warmer, we're first name basis here. So what we've been working on this school year with the students at Case. So we decided to get creative, go along with the spirit of doing things a little bit differently this school year and working with what we have to work with. So we've been going into all the different teams. We've had teachers volunteer their time, their class time, their precious class time with their students to let us come in and give some information and share some tools with the students on mindfulness. With the ultimate goal being really to give these students, to give your children a tool, another tool to add to their tool bag, whether they use it today, whether they use it in 10 years from now, just as a way to support them, perhaps maybe view things in a more positive light and to aid them as they navigate, as they navigate through life in any year, but especially in a complicated year like this. So that's the purpose of our presentation is to really share with you with what we've been teaching them and just to give you a little bit more information on mindfulness, because I know it's kind of a buzzword and it's not as always as easy to define as it seems it may be. So as Mr. Taylor had said, if there's questions that pop in your head, feel free to type those into the chat, we'll be happy to answer them later. You can also give us your email addresses and we can send you some more information and communicate with you after the fact, if that's something that you'd like to do. So we're actually going to begin with a practice. And it's the same practice that we do with the students when we come into the classroom. So feel free to participate with us. If you choose not to, that's absolutely fine. However, the practices are really something you need to experience in order to feel the benefits of. So I won't say much more about it other than what we're going to do. So we're going to do a breath practice. So I just want you to sit comfortably, however you're seated or standing, whatever position you're in right now. Try to relax your arms, relax your shoulders. And you can settle your gaze with your eyes either at the screen or you can close your eyes if you'd like to, if you're in a space that that is comfortable and you feel comfortable doing that. So we're going to do a breath practice. We're going to try to breathe in and out through our nose. We're only going to do this for about 30 seconds. So as you breathe in through your nose, I'd like for you to think the words breath in or breathe in. And as you breathe out, think the words breath out or breathe out. So let's begin. If your eyes are closed, you can open them and resume a natural breath and thought pattern. But before I go any further into the presentation, just take a moment right here to think about and pay attention to how you feel. How did that little breath practice that we did make you feel? And there's no right or wrong answers. And then we'll move on with the presentation. So we try to get creative in teaching middle schoolers about this kind of high level way of being, I guess. And this picture seemed to wrap it all up for us. And it seems to be a way that us as humans and adults and children can really grab onto this concept. So we show them this picture in the classroom and we say, what do you see here? So we get chatting, oh, we see a person, we see a dog, we see trees, we see. And then we get into the meat of it. We see the human and the human's thought bubble is really full. Some kids have said it looks polluted, it's crazy, there's a lot going on. And then we talk about the dog's thought bubble and how the dog's thought bubbles, nice and clear, there's trees and the sun, which is the same environment that the human and the dog are in right then. So really, in a nutshell, that is what mindfulness is. That mindfulness is our dog's thought bubble. It's being aware and present wherever you are, whenever you're there. So that's really what this is all about and there's some beauty to that. As you can see in the picture, we're not always outside with the trees and the sun. However, our thoughts can get carried away and we can get worrying about things that are coming up or maybe perseverating on things that have happened that maybe carry us into a thought pattern or into a state of being that isn't really serving us. And it's also not allowing us to be our best self and be present and aware of what's going on at the time. So mindfulness really is all about paying attention to the present moment on purpose with compassion and kindness. So we add that compassion and kindness piece in there because we want the kids to experience that in themselves, to be compassionate towards themselves and whatever is going on at that moment, whether it's good or bad, we all have our good and bad moments. But also to extend that beyond ourselves to other people. So it's just a little graphic here about what I was saying before, that future and past states. Have you ever heard the phrase, the present is a present or the present is a gift? And it really can be, it can, it can take us out of where our brain might be going and might be getting carried away to. The beauty of it too is we're, we're humans, we have senses, we have these things that our body shares with us that can draw us into where we are. So when we did our practice together, that breath practice, we were controlling our breath. And our breath is something that psychologically, neurologically naturally calms us down. So that was meant to be a calming mindfulness practice or pattern. So we do touch on meditation with the students. And that's just because that's the actual act or the practice piece of mindfulness. Mindfulness is about being aware of your surroundings and being careful with how you respond to things. And it's a whole host of things. But the meditation is really the practice piece. And I like to equate it to learning an instrument. If you're picking up a French horn, let's say, just as an example, you're not going to jump on stage and try to perform for a whole audience of people when you're just starting to learn the instrument. You're going to want to practice maybe alone or you're going to want to practice when you're nice and calm and relaxed so that you're in a safe space and can learn these skills so that they build to the point where when you are set in front of an audience of people, or in this case, when you are faced with a stressful situation or maybe somebody has said something to you that makes you feel like you really want to react and maybe lash out with some words, you'll have those resources, you'll have that training already in place to take a pause or take a breath and think about how you want to respond to that moment. So the meditation is really the practice of it. And all it is, is a practice where an individual or a person focuses their mind on an object, thought, or an activity. So something relatable to the students lots of times is, do you play a sport? Do you play an instrument? We all gravitate towards activities where our attention is grabbed, right? It can be playing games. We tend to gravitate towards those because it gives our, our brain a break from all the things that we think about a lot. We need to focus when we're playing a sport, when we're on the field, when we're playing an instrument, whatever that skill is that we're learning or that we're doing. So it doesn't have to be sitting still with your eyes closed and your hands up towards the ceiling and all of that. It can, this, this practice can be achieved in lots of different ways. And it really works differently for lots of different people in lots of different ways. Because we're all individuals. So we refer to the practices that we do as our mindfulness meditation practices. So if you hear those words come out of your kids' mouths, that's what they're talking about. We do touch on some of the relatable facts about who we are as human beings with the kids. So we talk about this triangle of awareness. So these three things, our thoughts, our body sensations and our emotions are things that we carry with us everywhere. And they're things that we can draw our attention to at, at any time or at certain times in order to bring us into that present mindful state. The thoughts and emotions parts gets a little bit more complicated. So we really focus a lot on the body sensations, noticing what we smell or how our breath feels. But we do like to touch on the idea that we really can control all three of these things as well. So through our practices and through our mindfulness meditation practices, I like to choose two of these things in our triangle in order to affect the other one. So the practice we did at the beginning, we controlled our body by our breath. I asked you to sit nice and calm and relax your arms. That was controlling our body. And then I asked you to think some words while we were breathing. And that might have been challenging, which it usually is in the beginning. That's why it's all a practice. But then following that practice, we talked about how you felt. So when we take control of those two things, we can change the way that we feel. And I think that's really empowering. And I, I think that's a really great tool for these, these kiddos to learn, especially at this age and especially right now when they're being faced with some really adult concepts and adult levels of functioning that we're asking of them just due to the nature of what life is like right now. So the practice is to build those skills, to make those, those feelings of our dog where we're just simply where we are and we don't have to worry about any of that other stuff as something that they can carry with them. So I'll pass it over to Mrs. Van Warmer and she'll touch a little bit more on how this plays a role in our school, in our school setting.
Ms. Shank, just want to let you know, Ms. Van Warmer got kicked out of the meeting on accident. Her computer's down a little bit, can you continue?
I can sure get it dry.
Okay, thank you.
I might need to invite in a few mindful breaths. I'll be completely honest, I'm, I'm not prepared for this part of the presentation at all. But I will sum it up in my own words and I'll allow Mrs. Van Warmer to pick up where she is able to, if she's able to join us again. So I just had my speaker view on, I'm going to go to a bigger view so I can see if and when she's able to join back in. So I'll give a little bit of background about how these skills were taught in previous years. This is my first year at Case, but the previous pivot counselor and I worked very closely together. And her and Mrs. Van Warmer had, had offered self-regulation classes. So students used to get pulled from classrooms and brought in to learn some of these mindfulness skills in order to help them regulate their emotions, in order to help them with organization, with focus, all of those great like social emotional learning sorts of skills through some of these practices. So this year being what it is, we weren't able to do that. So we got creative, like I said, and tried to figure out how to offer these skills to all of our students, which I think is really great. The, the environment of the school is really a great one for it because it's something we can all participate in. And a beautiful thing about that is, is the school extends beyond the school, right? We're our hub, we're our gathering place for students. But when students come home to their families, they carry a lot with them that they've learned or maybe that they've picked up at school. So these skills can be carried out beyond. And maybe, maybe they're deciding to invite these practices in while they're at home. Or maybe they are starting to invite them in when they know they have to shift from game mode at home or play mode at home and okay, now it's Zoom time or it's remote learning time or it's time for me to sit and focus.
Ms. Shank, I just want to interrupt a little bit. Ms. Van Warmer just started entering, so we should hear her soon.
All right, Mrs. Van Warmer, I didn't get into the meat of it. I was just blabbing about how we used to do this in past years. It's all yours.
Okay, wow. Well, now we know how technology is always throwing a little loophole in things. So why mindfulness in our schools, which, you know, sometimes the kids have even asked, what's this all about? Why do I need to learn this in school? How, you know, how will it benefit me? Just as much as, you know, we've had that question from teachers and parents alike. So we're just going to start a little bit by giving you some of the science and data. Now you can find a lot of research on mindfulness. And we picked some research that we thought was really powerful and effective. So in the next slide, we have just some information for you that when mindfulness practices are immersed into schools, there's a positive effect on academics, mental and behavioral health and social behavior. So I just want to go through those for you. For academics, improvement in cognitive performance, school self-concept and engagement, which of course, we're always trying to find ways to increase engagement. Students appear to have a greater ability to pay attention, reduce, reduction, excuse me, of anxiety and high stakes testing. So as you know, testing, whether it's state testing, whether it's regions testing, whether it's just final exams can cause a lot of stress when students have some of these tools that they are able to put in place for themselves. Really, the mindfulness tools have a positive effect to reduction in that anxiety, which means better test performance. So for mental and behavioral health, decreases in stress levels, decrease in emotional over excitement, that overstimulation, and depression symptoms, so a decrease in depression symptoms, increase in emotional well-being and self-compassion. Lower self-harm, which you know is always a concern. Self-harm is really debilitating for students and it's usually a sign of very high level stress. So it's a beautiful thing that we know with something as simple as a simple breath practice and continuing to practice control of our breath and thoughts that we can actually have a positive impact in reducing self-harm. Social behavior, healthier responses to difficult school situations, reduction of implicit biases and increases in compassionate responses to others in need. So there's some more research to share with you, which sometimes research can be not so exciting, we know that. So we'll look at the next slide. But it's really powerful to just see some of these numbers. So this is from Mindfulness Journal, this was in the Wall Street Journal. Measuring mindfulness in schools, 24% increase in positive social behaviors, 24% decrease in aggression, 15% improvement in math scores, a reduction and prevention of depression-like symptoms, as we mentioned in the previous research, and improved classroom behavior. For example, self-control, paying attention and respect for others. So in the next slide, we're going to look at, just graph, for those of you who are visual, I always like to see visual. And this is coming from an actual school in Oakland, California, where they implemented just a six-week program to students. And they had a control group and a, in a treatment group, they called it. Though the treatment group was considered the kids that had many mindfulness lessons over that six-week timeframe. We're not talking entire classrooms being given up, more like small 10-minute practices at the beginning of class over that six-week period. And you can see that there was really some great improvements in paying attention, calming, self-care and showing care for others. So I think it's just something that we just feel so strongly about that this school that has this demographic is, you know, close in numbers to what are, to Case. You know, we have 600-ish at times, students that had 780. But Oakland, California at one time was the fourth highest violent crime for a city in our country. So to know that they can have such great improvements for students in such a short amount of time with mindfulness is really just showing us the power of having control over these simple things of breath and breathing and mind and thoughts and how it can really change the outcome of students' performance in school. Okay, next slide, Nova. Okay, so when you look at this, it looks complicated at first, but just follow along. These are the motivational factors. So student motivation, motivational factor, motivation, intentions, expectations and attitudes. And then you put it in some mindfulness practice and increase in emotional flexibility, an increase in attention, an increase in cognitive flexibility, all leads to non-judging awareness. And then with that, the outcomes, better physical well-being, increase in positive behavior and increase in mental well-being. So behavior, when we're looking at acting with awareness, acting with flexibility, acting autonomously. So when we put all that together and we say, okay, so again, so we looked at the stats and we looked at the charts, how does this benefit kids in school? How's this benefiting my child? I think it's important to look at that when students learn to control their thoughts and their behaviors, it's very empowering and they end up taking more ownership over their behavior. So with those outcomes, you can see why behavior increases their own well-being. They tend to be less judgmental, less impulsive. They have a little bit better idea of understanding behavior, not just theirs but others. But if you can understand your own behavior and the roots of the behavior, you actually can understand other people's behavior and you'll have more compassion and kindness for other people, which as you know, in school, we really want to see kids having compassion and kindness towards others and flexibility with behavior because we all come from different walks of life and different experiences. We're always going through different things that a lot of times we don't know and our students don't know what other students are doing. So it really does increase the understanding of their emotions. But it also helps students communicate more effectively because they're understanding their emotions and their behaviors and others' behaviors. They learn to just manage people in general. So if somebody is really kind of pushing their buttons, they learn how to control their response versus reacting, which, you know, really can make a big change in their behavior in school. And all of this can be applied outside of school as well. So when you're listening to this and you can think, well, I can see how that could even change things in my own household. So you can apply that to anything, to life, but to your house, to our school. It helps build a positive learning environment in school, not, you know, not just in the classroom, but in a school community itself. More pride in school and being in school and student performance. They take more pride in how they are behaving, but also how they are successful in school. Having a little bit of mindful practice allows them to slow down in a very busy and chaotic world. So they learn how to take a breath, to follow the breath, to calm their minds, to calm their thoughts, which just gives a more calmer overall feeling for a student in any situation. And again, as well as an adult, a parent, however you want to apply that. And it just helps build for us, you know, we're looking at ways to make Case a kinder, more compassionate environment. But we're not talking about just the classroom. And of course, we want it in the classroom, but in the hallways, in Case as a building in itself. And then if you really want to look at how we would love to grow that, we would, we look at how can this affect if we have mindfulness throughout our district, starting in the earlier grades and kids learning this control and this understanding and how, you know, the entire district would benefit that. And then you can go beyond that and say, if everyone was practicing more kindness and compassion, you know, what would our community look like? And how would our community treat each other? And expand out to, you know, our state and our country and the world? So I know this starts small, we're starting with your children, but it can have really great and positive results beyond just the classroom. No, no, we'll go ahead and flip to the next slide. So, you know, in looking at this, it's kind of a cute little graphic we like to show because it's just giving you an example of mindfulness. So this is just, look at this as a student. So what if I fail the test? So the student has a test coming up. I have a worried thought, it's drifting by. It's okay, I know it's temporary, I don't have to react to it. I am not my thoughts. I'm paying attention to my breath, that's it. I'm observing my breath and if my mind wanders, that's okay. I'll just come back to my breath. I'm bringing myself back from a worried future thought to the present by getting in touch with my senses. What do I touch, taste, smell, hear and see in the moment? So that's an example of a tool that we'll be working in the future in our next lesson with students is offering them. We offered them, as you experienced at the beginning of our presentation, a very quick, small tool, but powerful tool. And we'll be giving them more of them to help them stay in that present moment so that those thoughts of worry, whether it's about the past or the future, don't interfere with what they're experiencing in the present moment. So if it's a test, how they can control that breath and be focused on the test and not worry about what's going on or what went on in the hallway or what could go on at the end of the day. So again, just learning that ability to manage their behaviors, to manage their control over their thoughts, their breath, their mind, is, it's just so extremely powerful. Go ahead, Nova. Well, I think I might have already covered that one. So how does it benefit our children? I think it makes our children, your children, we all have ownership of them. We care about them so much, makes them more kind and compassionate. And it will have, it'll help create their ability to be more kind and compassionate to others. And that's really a very big goal here. And we want to support them in learning that and be the best little humans that they can be. And of course, this can also trickle home. And the way that they respond to situations versus react to situations at home and could just bring a more positive, more calm environment on the home front for you as well. And of course, mindfulness for adults and parents and teachers, it does the exact same thing. So this isn't something that's just being, you know, could be offered to our students. We will offer you the opportunity to, you know, talk with us, learn from us, or we can make recommendations of how you can continue to learn more about mindfulness, maybe even experience some mindfulness of your own. But even just if you notice that your son or daughter comes home and they're a little bit calmer or they're a little bit more responding to situations versus emotionally reacting, I think you'll be really happy with seeing some of those changes.
Stop the share here. Another word we've been using to describe it is just empowering. We're giving them something really powerful to, to carry with them everywhere. And another superpower that goes along with it is it's, it's very private. Nobody knows that you're paying attention to your breath. Nobody knows that you're thinking, I'm calm, I'm okay, all I'm doing is breathing. So we try to make it as accessible as we can and just give those, give those guys some tools for that tool bag.
All right, so parents, we kind of invite you at this point, go ahead and use the chat if you have any questions for Mrs. Van Warmer or Mrs. Shank, or if you have questions for Mr. Taylor or myself about plans moving forward next week. Mr. Taylor already did speak that students will be coming back next Monday in the hybrid model that we were earlier this school year. Right now, I do not have any questions in the chat.
So I just, I just want to tell you, you know, that I, I've been around, when I'm in the classrooms, I know that there's several teachers at Case that use this right at the beginning, which is really, it's, it's an awesome way for the kids to just kind of, you know, take a step back. And if you want to use the term chill out, I mean, that's, it gives them an opportunity to chill out. opportunity to chill out right in the beginning and focus and, and the teachers, a lot of teachers that do this, they'll say, you know, if I forget, the students will say, well, aren't we going to do that breathing thing that you talked about? And, you know, and they're like, oh, of course, but you know, so there's a lot to be said for, you know, just being able to self-regulate and, you know, Ms. Van Warmer spoke very eloquently about kindful, kindful, being kind and, and mindfulness and we want kindness and we want our kids to be kind. And, you know, there's a lot I want for all of our children at Case Middle School, but one of the most important things that I will say to people is that I want them to be kind. I want them to be kind to each other. And then if we can figure that out, then, you know, we can just do all kinds of great things. So I'm not seeing anything in the chat. So I really want to say.
One, Mr. Taylor, excuse me. Um, will you be requiring everyone to be fully masked, even if social distancing when they return?
So that's a great question because there was a, a piece of information that Ms. Blair and I came upon today, that I feel that that's going to be the direction, but we will put something out tomorrow because we're, we reached out to the district office to get clarification on that. So we will make sure that everybody is all set with whatever the expectations are. So thank you for asking that and we'll, you will hear from us tomorrow regarding that one way or another. Anything else in the chats? I, I appreciate you all joining us tonight. I appreciate Ms. Shank and Ms. Van Warmer giving up some of their family evening time to be here and we look forward to seeing your kids on Monday or Tuesday, depending on the day, or if not on Wednesday, if they're virtual, whatever. We've got all kinds of kids here. Reach out at any time if we can help you, if you need support, you know, socially, emotionally, academically, we are here for you. I think we're doing a great job in a, in a different situation this year, different times, but I'm very proud of you and, and the teachers and everybody. So let's have a great night and we'll see you Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday. Taylor, peace out.